Doing to the car wash up at 13 Mile. Looks nice.
Yeah, it's long overdue. Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna omit everybody in the waiting room.
Okay. I'm ready to start when you are.
Yep. I'll give you a five, four, three, two, one here in just a moment. All right. Five, four, three, two, and your life, sir.
Good evening. The April 12th, 2021 zoning board of appeals meeting for the city of Berkeley is called to order. At this time, I'd like to ask everybody to locate and face the American flag wherever that may be. And we'll say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Of the United States of America.
States of America.
And to the republic. For which it stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty, justice for all.
There's like.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgarten. Okay, Ms. Schludow, can we have the roll call, please?
Board member Alan.
Here in Berkeley.
Board member Gesund. You're on mute, sir.
Aaron Berkeley.
Board member Krug.
Here in Berkeley.
Board member McAlpine.
Here from Berkeley. Sorry, I'm just gonna push my dog out of the room.
Board member Euler.
Here in Berkeley.
Board member Ward.
Here in Berkeley.
Chair Evans.
Here in Berkeley. Okay, we do have a quorum. This board consists of seven members and we have all seven members here tonight. Thanks, everybody, for attending. We have an agenda before us. Do we have any suggested changes or modifications either from staff? Or any members of the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Ward.
We have moved by Mr. Allen, support by Ms. McAlpine. To, uh, does that to approve?
Yes.
Great. Okay. Any discussion? Ms. Schludow.
Gesund.
Here. I mean, yes.
Krug.
Yes.
McAlpine.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Alan.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes. Okay, we've all received a copy of the draft minutes for our last meeting on March 8. We've all had an opportunity to review it. If anyone has any suggested changes or corrections, let's bring those up. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes as submitted.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Gesund and support by Ward to approve. Any discussion? Ms. Schludow.
Krug.
Yes.
McAlpine.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Alan.
Yes.
Gesund.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes. Minutes are approved. Next item up is old business. We have no old business, so I'm gonna move on to new business. Item one. And, uh, Ms. Schludow, could you introduce the case and give us the summary?
Yes. Hello, everyone. So I'd like to introduce you to PBA dash zero four dash two, one, two, nine, two, eight, Robina. This is a variance request to construct a second story addition that encroaches into the front yard setback. The applicant is the architect Joe Nowitzki on behalf of Gloria and Sandra Dykers. This property is located at the northeast corner of Robina and Wiltshire. The applicant is requesting an eight foot, two inch variance to encroach into the existing front yard setback of the second story, for the second story addition. The house is a legal non-conforming structure. I have provided some background here in my review letter. According to Oakland County, the single family was constructed in 1920. It is legal non-conforming as it does not meet the current front yard setback as established in section 138 dash five, two, six of the zoning ordinance. That ordinance requires a 25 foot setback. The existing structure is 10 feet, 10 inches from the front property line, as you can see in the aerial that's provided in the review letter, as I noted. You can see from it, the accompanying site plan provided by the applicant, there are several homes along Robina that do not need that front yard setback requirement. So it is in line with, um, with the existing neighborhood. Now, the status of the non-conforming structure, part of the zoning ordinance allows for enlargement or enhancement or additions onto legal non-conforming structures. However, that in enlargement or any addition has to be in compliance with all of the ordinance requirements as they currently stand. So the way that the ordinance is written is the second story addition could be constructed, however, would have to meet that, that 25 foot setback. So the applicant is requesting to encroach into that front yard setback by the eight feet, two inches in order to make it more in line with an existing structure in the neighborhood. There have been several letters of support. I have included those into your packet. Those were provided by the homeowner and we did get a couple of emails, so I did provide a few. I can read those into the record during the public hearing. Now, the standards of review are what the ZBA is charged with in deliberating on this case. Not read those for you now. Number one, the need for the variance is due to unique circumstances or physical conditions of the property. Number two, the need for the variance is not the result of actions of the property owner or previous property owners. Number three, strict compliance with the ordinance will unreasonably prevent the property owner from using the property for permitted use or will render conformity with those regulations unnecessarily burdens them. Number four, the requested variance is the minimum variance necessary to do substantial justice to the applicant as well as other property owners. And number five, the requested variance will not adversely impact the surrounding properties. Now, as I noted in my review letter, the second story addition is not proposed to encroach any further into the front yard setback. It is merely to extend within the existing footprint of the house. So the non-conformity in that respect will not be enlarged beyond what it is. However, it is not built within the conforming standards of the zoning ordinance as it's currently written. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Schludow. Do any members of the board have any questions for Ms. Schludow? Nope. Okay, I don't see any.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Gesund.
I did have a question. Is there anything within the draft of the master plan that would deal with the setbacks for these houses that are on such a small on such small lots that don't have existing setback? Is there anything that was adjusted, that was suggested on how to deal with properties like this?
To deal with non-conforming structures?
Well, then seems like every house on this block has, doesn't meet the setback requirements. Is there anything? Any change in the setback requirements, at least in this section of town, that would?
No, the, the master plan has not addressed changes to the setback in, in specific areas. No.
Okay.
This, this area of, of the, the neighborhood was plotted, you know, back in the 1920s as evidenced by this, and so all of these were, were built to a standard that no longer exists, and so they are considered legal non-conforming.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other board members with any questions for Ms. Schludow? Okay, great. Well, we'll move on. I do see that the applicant is here, Mr. Nowitzki. And also the homeowners are here. And just before we get started, I'm just gonna review the, uh, the process that we do. So what I'll the next step here would be is that the applicant, you'd have an opportunity to present your case to the board. You don't have to necessarily recite everything in your application, but you can if you want. We've already detailed, but that's okay. You can tell us whatever you think we need to know. At that point, I'll open discussion with the board. Turn it back over. The ZBA may ask the applicant or the homeowner's questions. They may ask staff questions. I'll open the public hearing. Now, each person who wants to speak on a case, please state your name and address for the record. And, uh, your time period to speak shall not exceed three minutes. Once everyone's done speaking, then of course we'll also reference the written comments that we've received for this case. I'll close the public hearing. I'll bring it back to the board for the discussion. At that point, all public comment is closed. Unless a member of the ZBA has a question for, for example, the applicant or the owners. I'll call for a motion after I make the motion or after someone makes a motion in their support, we'll have discussion and then we'll have a roll call vote. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Nowitzki. Welcome.
Well, it's been a long time. Hello, folks. I think it's pretty impressive how well we're getting used to this new forum. It's, uh, it's very impressive, actually. These folks are just trying to expand their property. I'd really like them to to speak for their own interests. I can say that I feel comfortable with the technical aspect of adding a second story over the existing home. We did not feel comfortable adding over the existing porch that is now being given back to the city with approval of this variance and support. So I'd like the owners, if I may, to speak for their own needs.
Great. Well, I'll turn it over to the owners. Go right ahead.
Hi, I'm Sandra Dykers, one of the homeowners. This is my wife Gloria. I think Ms. Schludow detailed very well the the five standards for review, so I'm not gonna recite that. I think it's, it was very well documented. But yeah, I think it's for us, it's pretty simple. We're just trying to basically extend the second story from the addition that was done in the 90s to the front of the original house to give us more space, obviously, and then make it more uniform. If you came past our house now, it looks like they dropped a box on the back of an old house, which is exactly what they did, and it looks very out of place and strange. So I mean, not only do we want to make it look uniform and, and obviously modern, but, uh, also giving, giving us the space that we need. Both of us are working from home now permanently, or that's what it seems like, uh, at least in the near future, and we really just want to give ourselves that additional space with our kids.
Hey, thank you. Anything else to add? Are you all set?
No, I mean, um, yeah, this, just, I guess, one more thing that, that the addition to build forward is really what we see is our only option. I mean, we have a neighbor to the north. We can't go there and then our driveway and our sun porch to the south and the, and the east of us. So moving the house forward is really the only thing that, that made any sense, or really, that's the only option at all, quite frankly. And that's why we work with Mr. Nowitzki on that plan, the way it is, the way you've seen it.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Nowitzki, anything else to add or?
I'll, I'll answer any technical questions if you, if you have any, and, uh, there, it's well stated. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, appreciate that. I'll turn it back over to the board. Does any member of the board have any questions for our applicants? I have a, a couple of comments, just a couple of questions if I could. Well, first of all, I like the fact that you've maintained the existing, the height of the existing house. In my neighborhood, I've got some houses that are a little taller than I think they have to be architecturally to obtain the same thing. And I like the fact that you're, you're, you're not going as tall to the peak as you possibly could. And I also appreciate that you've designed it to open up that porch. I think that's a, a nice tool for a walking community like Berkeley where you're outside and you can enjoy and see people walking by. So I just wanted to, uh, say that's something that I thought was very positive about the plan, but my, my two questions are, and the applicant, you talked about this a little bit. Is there, could you talk a little bit about why you perhaps couldn't extend a building addition, say, over the sunroom? Can either of you talk about that?
Well, there's no foundation under the sun porch. I mean, it just sits on, you know, it's, it's, it really is a three seasons. It doesn't have a full-time foundation. There's really no way to build out on that. And then we'd be very close to the garage. I'm not sure that would also meet the, the city code or ordinance. I'm not sure. I, I know you have quite a a distance you have to be from your garage as well and your living space, and I don't think that would even be an option to go backwards either.
Gotcha. Certainly not. You couldn't go back at least any further than what's there now, right?
Right.
And it wouldn't even support. Did I hear someone else talk besides?
I mean, to add off the rear of the house, you would have to cut through the existing two rooms and our current bedroom is, is it eight by thirteen?
Post-it stamp.
So there's really no good way to create a hallway to our rear addition. I mean, bringing it forward makes the most sense.
Okay, so even if you were able to do something, you couldn't support just throwing something on top, you have to remove the sunroom and start from scratch. Got it?
That's correct.
Okay, got it. And then my other question, if you can answer this is, and I saw your plans, but have you given it to some thought as to what your design might be if you had to meet the setback requirement? If this board were not to give you a variance, um, could you reconfigure upstairs and get some of what you need, or can you talk a little bit about that?
I, I mean, the problem with do, with doing that is we would have to create another, um, I mean, we'd need another load-bearing wall in the living room. So we already have one load-bearing beam, so we would have to create another, um.
That would basically be, we would have to put the addition further back from where the original house ended and have that load, another load-bearing structure built inside the home, you know? Go ahead, Joe. Maybe you can explain it.
No, that you said it. We've gone over this very carefully, tried to conform. And, uh, this house isn't a full basement under this portion. It's a crawl space. We would have to rebuild structure in a crawl space under an existing home. It's very difficult, if, if I may say so. I don't know that it makes sense to go forward. If we had to do that kind of trickery, could it be, could it be done potentially within a reasonable format? Probably not.
Certainly with enough engineering, just about anything can be done.
Correct.
Great.
We're trying to make an affordable structure here.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Well, I'm all set with my questions. I'll just turn it back over to any members of the board that may have any follow-ups. Seeing none. Okay, I'll move on to the public hearing portion of the meeting. At this point, I'll move on to public comment. The public will have the opportunity to speak on this matter, to speak during public comment, which I'll open in just a moment. Participants in the webcast can utilize the raise hand function by selecting manage participants on the bottom of your dashboard and then select the more button in the bottom right-hand corner. Our moderator will call your name aloud and unmute you so that you can speak. For those who have called in, you can be placed in the queue for public comment by selecting star nine. Our moderator will announce the last four digits of your phone number for recognition and unmute you so that you can speak. Participants will have three minutes to speak as if they were here at the meeting in person. Once your three minutes are up, you'll be muted by our moderators. Additionally, comments can be submitted prior to or at this time via email to zoning@berkleymish.net where residents and community members can submit public comments as well. Your email must be able to be read in less than three minutes. Given the circumstances of the virtual space, we may not be able to read through all of the email comments, but know that we will have them stored and acknowledged on the public record. Now, to participate in public comment, you can dial by phone at one three, one, two, six, two, six, six, seven, nine, nine. Enter the meeting ID nine, nine, seven, zero, six, five, two, eight, two, seven, eight. So at this time, I'll open the public comment period. Aaron, well, Ms. Schludow, we'll start with you for any emails we received just prior to the meeting.
I have not received any emails prior to this meeting. Um, we did receive a number of emails and communications that were included in your packet. I can read those aloud if you would like.
Whoop. Pardon for that. I think what I'll do is I'll, um, turn it back over to any members of the public who may be waiting in person or over the phone and then come back. So at this point, are there any members of the public in the Zoom broadcast who would like to make a comment?
I would.
Okay, sir, if you could just tell us your name and address.
Hi, my name is Matthew Penny. I'm at two, nine, eight, three, Robina. I'm across the street and four houses down from the Dykers.
I don't know if anyone else. I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Okay. Is that a little bit better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, no. I'll hold it this way. My name is Matthew Penny. I live at two, nine, eight, three, Robina. I'm across the street and four houses down from the Dykers.
Okay, and go ahead with your comment.
So I wrote a letter in support. I decided to come in today to make myself available to the board. If anybody had any specific questions, I didn't think there was a need to reiterate everything that's in, in the record already.
Perfect. Okay, well, note that you're here. Thanks for your attendance.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the Zoom broadcast who would like to make a public comment? Mr. Baumgarten, do we have any members in the queue?
Mr. Chair, I don't see anyone utilizing the hand raised function or gesturing frantically on their screen either.
All right. Thank you. Okay, well, I'll bring it back. Vice Chair McAlpine, do you feel comfortable summarizing the public comments that we've received in our packet?
Um, I would, except I have them on my screen and I can't switch back and forth. I'm sorry.
Not a problem. We'll tell you what then, Ms. Schludow, would you feel comfortable?
I would. Um, we received an email from Matthew and Adrian Penny dated March 23rd, 2021. They were writing in support of the, of the plan for Gloria and Sandra Dykers' plan to renovate and expand their home. We've reviewed the contractor's plans detailing the depth and breadth of the expansion and are impressed with the work proposed. Specifically, the second floor addition and associated, associated facade improvements will perfectly fit within the character of our neighborhood, increase property values, and I'm sure create a more livable space for the Dykers' growing family. The Dykers' home is prominently visible from our front window, and we look forward to seeing the new improvements. We have no concerns about how the additions impact on the home's overall setback from the street and sidewalk. Many homes on our street and surrounding neighborhood have setbacks close to the sidewalk, and it has no adverse impact in the least. Butly, the setback is not a concern to us at all, especially given the home's corner location and the fact that the proposed addition simply brings the second floor roofline in harmony with the front wall. We are happy to endorse the Dykers' proposal and plan to attend the ZBA meeting should anyone on the board have specific questions for us. Respectfully, Matthew and Adrian Penny. Additionally, um, the homeowners circulated a petition noting, in no uncertain terms, we, the neighbors of Sandra and Gloria Dykers, support the plan and petition request. Uh, this was included in your packet and includes the signatures of many of the surrounding neighbors.
Thank you.
Finally, there was an email received on Tuesday, March 23rd, from Rebecca Riggs. To whom it may concern, please accept this letter of support for Gloria and Sandra Dykers to complete improvements on their home on Robina. We have lived on Robina for over 20 years, and we feel tremendously strong sense of community and connection with our neighbors. I can say confidently that everyone, myself included, strongly supports this renovation. Gloria and Sandra have been communicative with us throughout this entire process and are making wonderful improvements to the home, which will become a positive impact on the value of all of our homes. The plans look outstanding and the aesthetic will mesh well with the character of our street. Please feel free to reach out to me with any questions regarding this project. Kind regards, Rebecca Riggs.
That should do it, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. And Mr. Baumgarten, I'll just turn it back over to you before I close the public hearing for one final call.
Mr. Chair, I see nobody indicating a desire to speak.
Thank you. Okay, I will close the public hearing and I'll bring it back to the board for discussion. Does any member have any feeling on this matter?
Mr. Chair, I would like to say that looking at the plans and looking at what they're planning on doing here, the fact that the house doesn't exactly line up with the 25-foot easement like every other house on that block, apparently, after looking at the aerial views, that doesn't bother me at all, as a matter of fact. This is a really, really nice set of plans for what could most certainly be a, a wonderful project for the neighborhood and for the family themselves. And I don't really have any issues with any of it.
Thank you. Any other member, would any other member like to speak? Mr. Krug.
Yeah.
And then Ms. Ward after.
I'd like to, uh, I'm same with Steve we just mentioned. I think it's a perfect plan for that home and for that area and to blend it in with the neighborhood. They're giving back the front porch area, which I think is outstanding. So I support it 100%.
Thank you. Ms. Ward?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, I have looked at the five criteria, which we use to determine whether or not a variance should be granted. And in reviewing all five points, um, I think that this project checks all of the boxes. And like, uh, Mr. Alan and Mr. Krug, I too can support this variance request.
Thank you. Ms. McAlpine?
I would have to agree with my fellow commissioners, and I think Mr. Alan stated it very well. This is a, a good project, and I think it does blend well with the neighborhood.
Any other board members?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to add that I would much rather see an older home be brought back to its original luster than have it drop to the ground.
Thank you. Yeah, I believe having the non-conformity in an area where there, especially this block where there's many non-conformities does add a challenge. You know, typically, we look at things like property boundaries and shape, but there could be other factors that, uh, might make compliance with all other ordinances or some ordinances challenging due to the historical factors of what's out there now. And, uh, I think we can all agree, well, at least I feel that, um, this too does meet all the standards and certainly the, uh, the proposed structure will fit in with the neighborhood. And so I would support it as well. Would anybody like further comment, or perhaps is the time for a motion?
Mr. Chair, I think it's time for a motion.
Ms. Ward, go right ahead.
Um, with reference to PBA, uh, zero, four, dash, twenty-one, two, nine, two, eight, Robina variance request to construct a second story addition that encroaches into the front yard setback. Um, I move that we approve the variance based upon the fact that the variance meets the five criteria we use in order to determine whether or not a variance is, um, within the guidelines of our responsibility. That being said, that, um, it is a unique circumstance uh, with unique physical conditions of the property that the variance is not the result of the actions of the property owner or the previous owner. Strict compliance with the ordinance will, uh, not unreasonably prevent the property owners from using the property for permitted purpose. The requested variance is the minimum variance, um, and I have to commend the homeowners for not going crazy. Um, and, but going within, um, the, um, neighborhood, uh, and that lastly, the requested variance will not adversely impact the surrounding properties.
Thank you for that well-crafted motion. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Mr. Allen with the second. Any discussion or additional comments on the motion, perhaps any additional? Any discussion or additional comments on the motion, perhaps any additional factors that even wants to state that they believe might additionally bolster or support this request's compliance with our five standards. I have one to add. That there certainly is a practical difficulty that they are limited going up on some of their property. Because of the part that sticks out in the front because of the nonconformity. So they are they are burdened by that. So I just thought I'd throw that in there as just another reason to support our standards.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any additional discussion? Okay, Ms. Schludo, I think we're ready for a vote.
McAlpine?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Gesund?
Yes.
Krug?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes. Congratulations. You have received your variance. Your next step is to follow up with the city staff to proceed. Thank you for attending.
Thank you very much, folks. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll move on to the next matter for a variance request for property on Royal item number two for new business. Ms. Schludo, could you provide us a summary?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to draw your attention to my April fifth review letter. This is the case PBA dash zero five dash two one, two, three, four, four Royal request for three dimensional variances. One is to construct an addition and within the front yard setback. Number two is that accessory structures, proposed accessory structures exceed the maximum square footage. And number three, the lot coverage exceeds the maximum area. The applicant, Ms. Lorena Black, is here this evening. The location of the property is on the east side of Royal, north of Oxford. I have included the three dimensional variances that they are requesting as well as the standards of what is being required for them. They are located within the R one D single family residential district. I've included the summary of the requests because they're the totality of the project that they're requesting is is quite extensive here. And so I would recommend to the board to separate these three requests and deal with each one individually. So the first one is a variance request to extend the to construct an addition within the front yard setback. As you can see from the if you drove past the house, the there's a cutout is in the front of the building. So it doesn't follow the full front of the of the house and so they want to construct and enclose that front little area to have one uniform square structure of their house. The applicant is requesting a six foot, three inch front yard setback variance in order to construct this addition as proposed. This is similar to the previous request in that it is a nonconforming structure. Therefore, any addition to that nonconforming structure must be in compliance with the zoning ordinance as written. Therefore, they are requesting the variance in order to construct that addition. Number two, the combined floor area exceeds the maximum area. This pertains to the combined floor area of all accessory buildings and structures shall not exceed eight hundred square feet or one half of the ground floor area of the main building, whichever is greater. The applicant is proposing to construct an addition on the main floor of the first of the principal building. So the ground floor area of the principal is proposed to be one thousand six hundred and ninety six square feet. And based upon the above noted ordinance, the combined floor area of all accessory structures shall not exceed eight hundred and forty eight square feet. Now, the combined floor area of the accessory structures includes the two story garage as well as the swimming pool. Therefore, the applicant is requesting a variance of five hundred and seventy square feet in order to exceed the maximum combined floor area for the accessory structures and buildings. And number three, the lot coverage. Now, this goes in line with the with variance number two with the combined floor area. The maximum per maximum percentage of lot coverage for all structures in the R one D district is thirty five percent. The applicant is proposing a lot coverage of forty three point five six percent. As I mentioned before, this includes all structures. So it's the principal, including the addition into the front backs, front yard setback. The new garage as well as the swimming pool. So the applicant is requesting an eight point five six percent variance for the total lot coverage. I have included in the review letter the the standards of review and I have separated each one of them. So you'll see that they're they're separated. So the front yard setback has is has a discussion with each of the five standards of review. I'll read them just this once for for the record. Number one, the need for the variance is due to unique circumstances or physical conditions of the property. Number two, the need for the variance is not the result of actions of the property owner or previous property owners. Number three, strict compliance with the ordinance will unreasonably prevent the property owner from using the property for a permitted purpose. Or will render conformity with those regulations unnecessarily burdensome. Number four, the requested variance is the minimum variance necessary to do substantial justice to the applicant as well as other property owners. And number five, the requested variance will not adversely impact the surrounding properties. I did work with the applicant and the architects on these plans. There were a couple of other variances that were noted in their original plans. So we modified and we worked together to to try to limit the number of variances that were coming before you this evening. And based on their conversations, they had worked extensively over the past year in order to bring this project into compliance as much as possible. However, the the nature of what they're requesting did require these three variances to come before you this evening. As I mentioned, the applicant as well as the architect that has assisted her in this project is here this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Do any members of the board have any questions for Ms. Schludo? Ms. McAlpine?
Well, I don't necessarily have a question, but I do need to disclose that I am a member of the same boot camp where the blacks work out. So I just want to make sure that everyone knows I do have. I do know them. I don't know them socially. We've never done anything socially. We've worked out together, but that is that is the extent of our relationship.
I don't see this as a serious problem at all.
I I don't either. Ms. McAlpine, I'm sure you would be accuse yourself if you didn't think you could act impartially and fairly.
Correct.
Okay, well, thank you for that disclosure. Do any members of the board have any questions for Ms. Schludo? Ms. Schludo, I have a couple and it might be better if the applicant's architect might know this, but I'll ask to see if you do. So if the pool wasn't included, would they need relief from number variances two and three?
I would ask the architects to look at that.
Okay, all right. And I'll ask it at the time at their presentation. And then my other question would be is does the if I'm reading these plans, right, it appears there's a small portion of the is it correct that there's a small portion of the accessory building that's floor area? If so, does that count towards the and combined area of all accessory structures? Does it include that second story or is it just the footprint?
It combines both floors for the accessory.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. All right. Well, at this point, nothing more from the board members.
I did have one quick question. I'm sorry. The swimming pool, does it exist today?
No.
It does not. Okay, thank you.
That's part of their proposal. So they're proposing to construct that swimming pool.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
And that's an in-ground pool, right?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you. We'll see no other questions. I'll do the same thing I did last time for the order of procedure. And we have confirmed that the applicants present. And we've asked staff questions. Whoops, I'm ahead of myself here. So this point, the applicant will have an opportunity to present their case. And then I'll open a discussion with the board. The board members have questions for the applicant or the representatives. That would be the time to ask. At that time, I'll open up the public hearing. Now, each person wishing to speak on a case, state your name and address for the record. And your time to speak shall not exceed three minutes. Once all public comments are received and that would include a summary or reading of any emails that the city has received, I'll close the public hearing. I'll turn it back over to the board for discussion. And the ZBA may ask staff or the applicant questions, but it's important to know that once I close the public hearing, it's strictly for board discussion unless someone else is asked to speak. I'll call for a motion. Once our discussion is concluded, after the motion has been made and supported, there could be additional discussions and then we'll have a vote. So with that being said, Ms. Black, welcome. Thanks for coming. Let us know. As I indicated, I know you were here for the other meeting. Well, certainly you can tell us anything you want. Know that the board members have looked at your application in detail. And now is your time to let us know any, any, anything you'd like.
Okay, thank you. I was hoping my husband was going to be able to jump on, but he is not. He's currently deployed to Jordan. So I'm gonna do this the best that I can without him. I just want to start with saying, both my husband and I serve. I've been in the Army for twenty four years now. I spent twenty one of those on active duty. And when we moved here, I brought my two daughters. My husband already lived here. And I made a promise to them that they would never have to move schools again. And I apologize if I get emotional because it happens sometimes. Because this was eight, school number eight, when we got here and they were in fourth and fifth grade. So we spent several months looking for homes in in the Berkeley area because we love the community. My, the promise I made to my kids was very important to me. We found a couple. We had some that wouldn't take our offer, some that we were outbid. We found a home in Lathrip Village that we liked, but again, we ran into the issue of my kids were in middle school. So the school of choice was not an option for them. We tried to work on how we could get a waiver for that. Didn't work. And but we just kept coming back also to just loving the community and our neighbors. And I just want to throw all that out first. We have worked with the architect, as Aaron said, we've worked with Aaron, we've talked with the contractor, trying to find ways to make that the house work for us. We are a family of six. Four of us are rather large teenagers growing. But I'll go through the just the list that I have of the reasons why we'd like to do certain things that we'd like to do. So in reference to the front of the house, that is our bed, our son's bedroom. And currently he has enough room in it for his bed and a dresser, not enough, a lot of space for a desk and a workspace, which has become really important with virtual school happening a lot now. I currently am in my office, which sits in my living room, along with my our treadmill and other stuff that we have here for the kids. Our bedroom and my husband's office is in our basement and we just feel that the addition that we're proposing would allow us to create another bedroom for our daughter so we could get out of the basement as well as get an office just to maximize the space that we have in the house. So everyone can can have functional space that they can use. We're trying to expand so we can build a bigger kitchen because the small kitchen that we have currently isn't really ideal for a family of six. In reference to the pool, I am a disabled veteran and one of the things that my doctor recommends is swimming as an activity. So as I was going through just this last year of gyms closing and our kids being here, that's where we got the idea for a pool. So we could have that here, give our kids, myself, I could figure it out, but them a chance to get outside, still be here, stare where we can keep eyes on them and they just like all the kids probably in the community, just something for them them to do. And then in reference to the garage, it if if I'm understanding correctly and Andy can speak on this better, it's not going to be too much bigger than the garage that we currently have. It's just that space in the back would really allow my husband to, when he is home from deployment, a space to go. So basically, this is all about just everyone having, you know, a space where we can make it just more functional for us. I think that's everything.
Okay, thank you very much. Do any members of the board have any questions for Ms. Black? Okay, I do have one question, Ms. Black. Is your architect here?
He is.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm, I can answer any questions that anyone has. I know there was some questions about lot coverage and overall structured coverage for the house.
Could just let us know your name and residence, location, and then maybe I can ask my question again.
Andrew Danaher with D two Architecture. I live in Huntington Woods at one zero four two six Kingston. I know the area well. We've done a number of projects around and been in this area for a long time. And we've been working with the blacks, trying to figure out ways for them to kind of grow in place, manage their budgets some. The pool is really the, one of the largest pieces of this puzzle that we had. Other variances would be very minimal if it weren't for this.
If I could, sir, I did have a question.
Sure.
Yeah, so my question earlier was with the pool. If the pool wasn't in place, how can you talk a little bit about how that might impact the variance request two and three?
Yeah, so we define that on the site plan drawing on the front page. If it weren't for the pool and the associated space that supports the pool behind the garage, there wouldn't be a variance one or two and three as part of this. So the pool really and as everyone knows, the pool is not a vertical accessory use. It's an in-ground pool. Minimally affecting neighbors. It isn't a site that is going to store water. So our
No, we we understand that it's in ground.
Count that as accessory use, but I just hope everyone understands the coverage area is not not a physical structure that's vertical out of the ground. So and if we were to eliminate the pool together, the only variance that would really be required would be our the front resolution of the corner, which is the southwest corner of the house. We're not changing the front yard setback or the side yard setback. We're just completing the corner, if you will, with a with a small addition on a crawl. That was the intent to solve some of their functional space.
Yeah, thank you. If I could. So am I hearing you correctly that if the I thought I heard two things. At the first, I thought that you indicated that the pool and the back portion of the detached garage, if those both those were removed, there'd be no need for request two and three, but then I heard you say just the pool. If it's just the pool or is it both?
If it was just the pool, we would be a hundred square feet over, but there's a hundred square feet of supportive space that's behind the garage for changing. It acts like a pool house, if you will. So if the pool wasn't there, some of that would not be required. So we would be able to potentially do this without variance for those two.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks. That was very helpful. Appreciate it. Any, okay, and does anyone else have any additional questions for the applicant? Thank you. Okay.
I did have one question.
Mr. Allen?
Yes, the pool, as it's set up right now, it appears to be, since it's thirty eight by twelve, it's a lap pool, correct?
You know. Yeah, that's correct. Yeah. It's more linear than it is wide. So and that was all due to following the rules of setback from side yard, from garage, rear yard. So it's the six foot setback, which is a pool requirement in your city. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other members of the board?
Ms. Black, you had your hand raised?
I just wanted to add to the pool if it's helpful. I did talk with the pool contractor as well. Because I think initially we were trying to go with a larger pool based on the space and he did take it down based on the size of my family. So that's kind of how we landed on that size as well, if that helps with anything.
It does. Thank you.
Okay, well, it sounds like we're all, Ms. McAlpine?
I just have one question. Do you have any area issues with drainage in your backyard or excessive water during rain? That maybe the pool would help offset?
Yes, and I I forgot to mention that as well. We do get that kind of marshy land in the backyard when it rains. And I was told that will also help alleviate some of that and also pavers as well.
Any other members of the board? All right, I'm prepared to move on to the next portion of the meeting. This is a public comment. The public will have the opportunity to speak on this matter. To speak during public comment, participants in the webcast can utilize the raise hand function by selecting manage participants on the bottom of your dashboard and then select the more button in the bottom right hand corner. Our moderator will call your name aloud and unmute. Our moderator will call your name aloud and unmute you so that you can speak. For those that who have called in, you can be placed in the queue for public comment by selecting star nine. Our moderator will announce the last four digits of your phone number for recognition. And unmute you so that you can speak. Participants will have three minutes to speak as they would if we're meeting in person. Once your three minutes are up, you'll be muted by our moderators. Additionally, comments can be submitted prior to or at this time to zoning@berkleymish.net. Where residents and community members can submit public comments as well. Your email must be able, be able to be read in less than three minutes. Given the circumstances with the virtual space, we may not be able to read through all of the email comments. But know that we will have them stored and acknowledged on the public record. To participate in public comment, you can dial by phone at 1-312-626-6799. And enter the meeting ID 99706528278. So at this time, I'll open the public comment period. Aaron, Ms. Schluter, excuse me, can you begin with any emails we might have received prior to the meeting?
Yes, I've received two emails today. One is from a Richard Borer, 2328 Royal Avenue. He noted that he is supportive of the project that his neighbors Clarence and Lorena Black are proposing. He can't, he can't wait to see it built out. And the second email I received from a Natalie Arvulo. She is the Lorena Black's neighbor, owner at 2360 Royal Avenue. She's writing to express her support for the variances requested. As a longstanding member of the community, Lorena and Clarence are looking to continue to invest in their future here in Berkeley. Lorena has been thoughtful and kept us in mind as they began contemplating the possibility of an addition. The requested changes do not negatively impact the community and will allow for her family to benefit from the increased space. I fully support their plans. Best, Natalie Agrileal.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, are there any members attending, excuse me, members, any? Public who would like to speak? Ms. Smith, I see your hand is raised. Go ahead.
Yeah, hello there. Good evening. My name is Connie Smith. I'm at 2399 Royal. I'm across the street, maybe four houses down from the Black family. I've lived on Royal for almost 16 years, almost, I think Clarence has lived here almost as long as we have. And I have to say, I'm very excited for the prospect of their home improvement. Clarence is very detail oriented when it comes to taking care of his home. I think they are very thoughtful residents when it comes to the upkeep of their landscape. And their home and they're very generous when it comes to helping out their neighbors. So I would hate to see this family leave. Because of variance issues with them needing more space or just wanting to create their dream home. I know they were looking at some larger homes. I just hope that the variances do get passed for them. I think. That the property values will just keep going up, which is great for me as well. And I'm excited. They're a great community oriented family and a family that we need to keep here in Berkeley. I think it's good for our community. We just love them very much and I've looked at the plans. I know of their, their builder and I think the plans sound amazing and I think too rounding off the front of the house, because I could see it every day. Makes sense. Every time I walk by, just a little cutout in the house that's there now seems kind of silly, so adding that, you know, just making it. Even makes sense to me and I have no issues with the swimming pool there. And I have to say their plans sound lovely and I don't like walking in the yard. It doesn't sound like it's going to take up as much space. I live right across the street from the two brand new. Builds. There's a lot that was not quite a double lot and so we have two brand new homes that are like 2,200 square feet. And not quite a double lot. And so I feel like there's no way those homes can be between the home and the garage can be 30% of their lot. And so if, you know, the Black family wants to add a pool and extend their garage and make their home. You know, even nicer than it already is, like please let them do so. I would love to see an existing family. Benefits, you know, from this council and stay here. So they have my full support. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Are there any other members or the public in the broadcast who would like to speak? Please raise your hand. Mr. Baumgarten, do we have any? Anyone in the queue?
I don't see anybody, Mr. Chair, no.
Thank you. Ms. Schluter, did, were there any in our packet, any comments in our packet for this?
No.
Great.
No, the two comments that I received, the two emails were received.
Gotcha.
Sunday and today.
Okay, I don't see anybody else raising their hand, Mr. Baumgarten. I'll check one final time.
That's correct, Mr. Chair. Nobody looking to speak at this time.
Thank you. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. I'll bring it back to the board for discussion and potential motion. Ms. McAlpine.
I just wanted to confirm based upon what I heard is that this is a rather large family. And that given the shortage of houses we have in our specific community. I think that that is preventing them from going elsewhere, so our option, I think, is. To either figure out a way to make their house more usable for them as a family or potentially to lose them as, as residents, so I think. In our discussions previously, we've always talked about housing stock and I think this is a key case that. Demonstrates the need for a variety of different housing stocks or some ability to make what we have work better.
Thank you. Any other board member comments?
I just, I have one, if I could make it. I'm a very, very strong proponent of green space. And covering that green space just kind of goes against everything. That I believe in, but I will also temper that by saying, this is probably. One of the best put together sets of plans I've ever seen for maximizing the usage of a lot.
Any other board member comments, discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSond.
I'm breaking this apart is what was suggested. The.
Thank you for the reminder, yes.
Yeah.
Our, yeah.
The, the, the first, the first part, what, what's being done to the actual structure of the house. I don't see any problem with where we're getting into. Where we're getting into the weeds here is with, with the pool. I understand the need for a pool. And I appreciate both the blacks' service to the country. But I'm wondering if something can't be done there with. It sounds like they already cut the pool in half. If there's any way to cut the pool. Even more to still give the functionality that. That Mrs. Black needs for the. For being disabled, needing that for therapy and stuff like that. While still minimizing the. Need for a variance. I'm wondering if there's some sort of additional compromise we can make there.
Gotcha. Thank you, and you raise a good point that Ms. Schluter raised at the beginning of the meeting or at the beginning of this. I guess I'd just like to see an informal show of hands. Do we all agree that maybe we should talk about all three? One after another, one, two and three, or?
I'd like to see them kept separate.
Yeah, separate. I guess maybe ask, all right, yeah, I see everybody's hand up. Okay, well. We'll do our best to try to separate these with our discussion. So the first one. The addition into the front yard setback. Mr. DeSond, you had some comments on that that you mentioned. Do any other members have any discussion? Or would we like to start discussing that, number one? Mr. Krug.
Yeah, I would have no problem with that corner being filled in on that home. I think that's just a natural feel. I don't have an issue with it. You know, and it's such a small area, it's minimal, depending on what angle you're looking at, might hardly even notice it. Contrast that, for example, to just the case we just heard, where you could have people going up. You know, there's one better than the other. Well, it's our job to determine on a case by case basis, what's appropriate. I think where they're at and given the circumstances, I have no issue with, number one. You know, they've already got the. Encroachment into the front yard that, that limits what they can do with that one side room anyways. So that's my thought on that.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Ward.
Um, would you consider a. Motion on the first item and the first variance? And maybe get that out of the way and then we can go on to number two and number three, which. Include the garage and the swimming pool.
Yes, certainly. If you want to make a motion, please do, and certainly if there's support. I see no reason for that, but why we couldn't do it that way, but if certainly a board member has another thought, well, we can, we can discuss it. So. If you're willing to make a motion, I think it's proper.
My only concern is. I, I see these large homes. Especially in Birmingham, where they're building the house almost to the size of the lot. And. Like Mr. Allen. I like to see green space around the buildings. And. I guess in this particular instance, because the family has grown and they need. They need a bigger house and house, housing right now. I have a friend who's been looking for a house and the minute a house goes up. For sale, it's gone. They don't even get a chance to put in a bid, so. I think finding a home, finding another house would be difficult. I'm not sure. That our five criteria. Are met. With variant, the variance, the first variance. To add six feet, three inches to the front yard setback. But if there's another board member that would like to take a shot at. Resolution or a motion, I would be happy to support it.
Mr. Ular.
I'm not going to be brave enough to try a motion yet, but I did have a comment. I, I think the difference to me between this one and the last one. Was the giving back of the porch. I. You know, there it was, we had a non-conforming use and it was almost as if by denying the variance. Be cutting off your nose and spite your face, because, because the request would decrease the non-conforming use. Here, we don't have that. The variance will kind of increase the non-conforming use. It'll be the, the same footprint, but you'll have. If I'm understanding correctly, more house going out. To the, to the current edge of the footprint.
Right.
Whereas the edge of the house and the other one was actually moving back a little bit. Because the porch has been given back, so. It's the third criteria, I think, is the difficult one and. I don't think that we can put the current housing market as a reason to start. Ruling one way or the other on, on that criteria. I mean, that's something that's going to change every time we come here. So those are just my thoughts.
True, I'm sure if we're on this board in 2008 or nine, we might have different thoughts about the housing market. Thank you, Mr. Ular. And other thoughts on? Item number one for any of the board members? Yeah. Hearing my colleagues speak about this, I'm starting to think that. Reconsider, while, while the area. Being added to is not a lot. I'm not confident that if, certainly the property could not. Be very reasonably used for its intended purpose. In all, in all deference to the applicant, I, I'm not convinced that the board, I think this board needs to be careful. In using. Personal, you know, it's a large family and they want to use the property. I fully respect that and understand that, but at the same time. You know, a community can't necessarily be all things to all people. We've got a certain characteristic of this property that's very similar to the neighborhood, so I think we just need to be careful in. Applying. Perhaps personal preferences and focus on our standards, but yeah, I'm not sure. Anyways, that's my thought. Any other members of the board? Now, if desired, somebody can make a motion here. We can continue our discussion on item two and three and perhaps. That will give us some additional discussion points to add to this one, whatever direction the board wants to go and is, is fine with me, just somebody wants to just raise their hand and.
I think, I think hearing everything together and taking action separately might be the way to go here, because we might uncover some things along the way we didn't think of.
Sounds good to me. Well, I guess with that being said, does anybody have any thoughts on the next item? The combined area. Mr. Ular.
I mean, I'll, I'll say it and. You know, it's, it's, it's not pleasant, but you lose, I, I get lost with the pool. I, I just. It's. I don't think that, that this plan and that piece of land. Is right for a pool. It's, 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 it's too big and it, it. I appreciate the, the. Well, I appreciate everything in the presentation, but. Yeah, I don't, I don't think the pool works. It's just, it's just not. It's not something, again, the third criteria, you know, we start getting into in-ground swimming pools. Are, are we, are we then making a ruling that this particular in-ground swimming pool is not a luxury item? That it's a necessity and if we are. I'm okay with doing that if we have the documentation and everything to establish it, but. I. I don't see it.
Thank you. Any other members of the board? Like to say something?
I have a question. The swimming pool and the additional area behind the new garage, if the swimming pool were not there. There would be no need for that area? Is that what I heard discussed earlier?
I'm gonna, yeah, I, I'm gonna defer to the architect. Mr. Danaher, you still here?
Yeah, I think in Lorena, you can chime in too, but I think the, the elimination of a pool. Is probably, I mean, I know that was one of their most important pieces as we looked into this.
Sir, if I could just to cover the question, Mr. Danaher. I think his question is if you eliminate the pool, is there a need for an area variance?
The, the earlier answer was no.
Right, okay. Thanks for clarifying that. So, Mr. Allen, you got your answer?
Yes. Yes, thank you very much.
You know, I, my thought on this is, I think having an in-ground pool, and it's, it's actually unclear to me, and I guess that's not my job or our job in this board, that's the planning commission's job and city council. But I think there's a definite impact in regards to certain criteria or certain visibility things when you have structures that are above grade. Um, so for example, a pool can be in-ground, it can have three-foot walls, I don't know, four-foot walls. Uh, it can have a very different impact on how a property looks or, or is viewed from the outside. And in this instance, I'm kind of struggling, part of me says because it's a, uh, at-grade pool, the impact would be less, and I wouldn't have an issue with that. However, on the other hand, our ordinance doesn't say that. And I, you know, the ordinance is valid until it is changed. So, um, that's my thought, and that's my other thought on this is, while I don't have, I have a lot more acceptance with the pool, but, um, I do believe that, so I don't have much of an issue. Well, I want to hear from whatever the board members have to say as well. I'm kind of torn on this. Ms. McAlpine?
I guess my biggest struggle is considering the pool to be an accessory structure, given the fact that it's in-ground. Um, and that is just a question that I've struggled with is, I understand the garage in the home being accessories, you know, the garage being the accessory structure. A question of an in-ground pool being accessory structure, um, given the design that they have.
Thank you.
Yeah, unfortunately, we are saddled with upholding that particular ordinance, being that's the way that it's written.
Ms. Ward, you had your, uh?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, I have no problems with the variance regarding the, the garage. I understand that it would provide additional space, um, outside of the home, uh, for, uh, Mr. Black. And, you know, I, i- if you can put a second floor on a garage, uh, God bless you, and, uh, have at it. Um, but like the other members of the board, I, I do have some concerns with regard to, um, the addition of, of the pool.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate everybody's comments. I'm, I'm only one, one vote here, but I'm just, I'm starting to lean towards this, all three requests as being simply set up in a formal way, trying to fit 10 pounds of cement in an eight-pound bag. You know, I need to take out the personal nature of their desires and wants. And when I look at this, the only unusual characteristic I see with the property would be that the, the house is, uh, you know, the nonconformity with the house, but other than that, um, you know, this particular plan cho- chooses to completely remove a, uh, you know, an outbuilding, construct another one. Outbuilding and accessory structure, rather. Um, and while it's my opinion that the impact of an in-ground pool is, is marginally less than an above-ground pool, we have our ordinance to consider, and it's not our job unless we're asked to interpret. You know, that's the planning commission's job and city council's job to set those standards and, and what that is, so I'm, so that's where I stand. I know we're all contemplating, and certainly there's no rush, but Mr. Ular, your hand is up. Thank you.
I guess, just to try to put it another way, it, and I, I want to try to explain myself to the applicant too. If, if, if we, under our criteria, if we are to grant this variance, then I don't see how any other person who wants to build a pool in Berkeley, who comes before the board and says they want to violate the spacage requirements in terms of buildings covering the lot size, how are we going to be able to say no to them? And if it's at 41% versus 35%, or if it's 50%, I mean, where is the line and how do we do that? It, it, it says, I mean, the, the third criteria I talked about is that you can't use the structure, or you can't use the property without the variance. And you can use the property without an in-ground swimming pool. That seems callous, but I, I think that's the way the ordinance and the law plays out here.
Ms. McAlpine?
Um, and maybe if we could ask, if we could, um, ask the petitioner, is there an opportunity to make the small, the pool smaller and still accomplish what they want to meet these zoning ordinances?
That's a question for the, uh, Ms. Black. There's a question for you. Would you like, uh, Ms. McAlpine to repeat that?
Yes, please, sorry.
Not a problem.
I, I was just wondering if there's a way, I think we're stuck on the pool. And I'm wondering if there's a way in, to give you what you want and, and maybe to sacrifice is a smaller pool. Is that an option?
Yes. I wouldn't know, I would have to talk to the pool contractor again, and as well as Andy, I wouldn't know what that would look like or what that would need to look like, and I think Andy came off mute, so he might be able to speak to this better.
I think the complication here is if we're looking at it as variance or not variance, even a hot tub would need a variance in this, in this request, right? And the way Berkeley's zoning ordinance is written, if I'm interpreting it correctly, nearly all houses in Berkeley.
I don't hear the applicant. Is that just me?
No, I didn't.
Yeah, with Mr. Danher, we've lost you. I'm sorry, we can certainly come back to you. Okay. Well, Ms. Black, did you have any follow-up? And if not, that's okay.
No, I'm not exactly sure what he, where he was.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Ms. Ward?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have a, a question for Ms. Schluto. If the pool was made smaller, uh, what, what would the dimensions have to be in order to eliminate or minimize, uh, the variance?
Well, if, if the pool was made smaller, then certainly the variances number two and number three would be lessened. Uh, I don't have the, I won't be able to give you that information off, off the cuff of, of what it would need to be to, to go down. But if they reduce the size of the pool or reduce the size of the garage, then certainly the variance request, um, would be reduced.
Right, and, and if I could jump in, Ms. Schluto, Ms. Ward, you know, I mean, I, I think, at least from my vantage point, what I'm hearing some board members' comments is, um, it's the pool or at least from, it's either the pool and/or the accessory area as a whole, which is the pool and the garage, um, that's over, and, um, I'm not sure I'm hearing from this board that a reduced variance is what the direction that could be gone in. I think what I'm hearing, at least from the comments that I've heard, is that any variance to the accessory floor area does not appear to be supported by all of our standards. That's my interpretation of what I think some of the other board members have said. So whether they eliminate the pool or reduce the garage, or, I mean, in theory, could you reduce the garage in half and have a pool and still comply with everything? So it could be a combination of both, to give them a garage and a pool with no floor area variance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ular and then Ms. McAlpine.
It sounded like he was saying that even if you put in a hot tub, you need a variance as well. Is that what other people were getting before he cut off? And I wasn't following that, but I'd be interested to know.
I heard him say that, but in theory, if you were adding on, if their garage was smaller, you wouldn't need a variance for a hot tub.
Right.
That's where he was going.
So, so my, I thought when we were talking about the pool being smaller, it wouldn't possibly reduce the need or the size of the variance. Wouldn't it be po- is it possible that if the pool is smaller, there would be no need for variance depending on the size? I mean?
Yeah, right. In other words, uh, could you, what I hear you saying is could you still fit a pool and to some degree would not need a variance?
That, that was, that was what I would have followed up with, but.
Yeah. He's, he's not here and, um, oh, Ms. Schluto, yes.
Yeah, I did discuss that with the, with the architect when the plans first came through, is if the, the, the pool could be made smaller. And based on what he said, that they did make, they did make it smaller, uh, from what they had originally, originally discussed with the, the homeowners. And this size is what would do the, the most benefit for, for the homeowners. And, uh, with Ms. Black saying that she needs it for a therapeutic purpose, um, it wasn't, um, it, it was more in line with what would suit her needs as opposed to just a luxury item. So I don't know if that changes your, your, your outlook on, on this as a accessory structure of the use of it, rather than a luxury for, uh, therapy purposes.
Thank you. Ms. McAlpine, and then if you're still want to speak, and then Mr. Allen.
I'll refer to Mr. Allen.
Okay, I think the comment about the hot tub is, a hot tub is portable. It can be drained and moved. A swimming pool cannot be drained and moved. And, uh, I think that's the, what, the, what he was getting at there. You know, because you could change the location of your hot tub four times a year if you wanted to. Above-ground or in-ground pool, not so much. And I don't really think it's a structure. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Schluto.
Uh, a hot tub is not considered an accessory structure by our definition. However, typically those are included on, like, on a deck-type platform. Um, so that would be considered as part of the, uh, lot coverage of what the deck is already permitted to do, so it wouldn't be a separate thing.
Okay. That's what I thought.
Ms. McAlpine?
Well, I guess I'm still questioning, it, it sounded like he made a very general statement that hot tubs in general in Berkeley require a variance, and I don't, I guess, I don't think that's the case, so I'm not sure where he was going. He's actually, it looks like he's actually coming back.
He's coming back.
Because my recommendation was going to be if it was appropriate for the homeowner, that maybe, um, we do table this discussion to just, to see what their options are as far as the pool size go and, and what the variance would be then. But it looks like Mr. Danaher's back.
Yeah, I apologize, um, Commissioner, I was having some internet issues and then I was stuck in the waiting room.
Where, where were we relative to Mr. Danher's comments? Was there a question?
I think, um, it started with my question of is there an opportunity to make the pool smaller? Um, and would that warrant, um, variances or would that warrant then, then lesser variances? And if we take into consideration the medical need for the pool, um, you know, maybe that is the size that she needs to make it beneficial, but, um, I guess I would defer to the, to the architect or, um, suggest if there is an option to make it smaller, that they go back to the drawing board and, and possibly come back for a main meeting.
Yeah, the reduced size would still require variance, but, um, I mean, I think every, anything's an option. I can speak with the homeowners and see. I don't, I think we'd still be in the same position where we would have a variance request either way, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Gesund.
I think, I think part of where, where we're getting stuck here is that we do have a requirement that is the variance, the minimum necessary to do justice to the, to the applicant. And if we can reduce the pool or eliminate the pool and maybe add the, the first part to, to the actual structure, or can we can we do like maybe one and not, one and not the other two, or can we do two and not the other one? If we lose the pool, that, will, will that allow us to do the minimum necessary, or if we cut the pool in half, will that allow us to do the minimum necessary? So I think with that in mind, tabling this might be, oh, you're still there, tabling might be the best way to, to, to go about, so we can pursue those options of cutting one aspect in in half or, or eliminating one aspect and doing a different plan.
Thank you. Ms. Ward?
Uh, I, I would support, uh, Mr. Gesund's suggestion that the homeowner, Ms. Black, go back to Mr. Danaher and see if there isn't another way to present, um, the request so that, uh, the homeowner gets, um, as much of what they are looking for as possible, uh, with, uh, this, um, variance and, and the addition, uh, in the front yard as well as the size of the garage and, and the pool. Uh, I think that right now it is hard to ask the architect and the homeowner to try and figure it out right here, uh, on, on a Zoom meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Allen?
I'd like to make a motion that we set aside the discussion on PBA dash zero five dash twenty-one, twenty-three, forty-four Royal on the three variances they're asking for, and ask that they go back and try to reduce in size to minimize the amount of variance they need.
Thank you. So we have a motion postponed. Then you wanted to postpone that to a date certain, the next meeting?
The main meeting.
The main meeting, second by Mr. Gesund. Any discussion? Mr. Ular?
I would just throw in, um, I don't want to, you know, how do I put this? I don't want to disclude the possibility there's a medical necessity for this, and if that is, you know, I, I, I could be open to that. I would just ask if we're going to come back, that it might not be a bad idea to also include documentation in terms of that, and, um, you know, therapy, what is needed, how often, that kind of thing.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I, thank you. Any other board members with any comments?
I think this is the, gives the petitioner the best opportunity to go back and, and rework the plan and, and get, make something workable for them and the community.
I, I'm trying to think of a delicate way to say this, but I'm not convinced a medical necessity warrants a variance because I think the pool could be accomplished on this property without a variance. Uh, I think a garage could be accomplished on this property without a variance. I think in addition to the house could be accomplished on this property by variance. And I'm not convinced that there's any unusual characteristics other than the front nonconformity, uh, with the property, that we could support any variance. And to me, I'm, I'm going to vote no on the motion. I just don't think that even a reduced variance is going to somehow expose a, uh, compliance with, uh, several of our standards. I just, as I said before, I just think they're, several of our standards. I just, as I said before, I just think they're, they're asked, they've got a large home, or a large household, and they want to maximize the use of their property in certain ways, but I I just think the basis, the request is personal. Mr. Ular.
And I, I may tend to agree with that, but I still think that to give them the best opportunity coming back, we should lay out all the information that might be helpful, so.
Okay. Thank you. Any further comments? So the motion is to postpone this matter till our next meeting. Read by Mr. Allen, supported by Mr. Gesund. Any further discussion? Ms. Schluto, I think we're ready for a vote.
Uh, yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Gesund?
Yes.
Prug?
Oh, yes.
McAlpine?
Yes.
Evans?
No. Okay, the motion passes. And Ms. Black will say in the next month in our meeting. Oh, I'm sorry, did I?
I called, I called your name first, Mr. Ular.
Oh, I didn't say anything.
Oh, I heard a yes.
Yeah, that was my mistake. I thought you had called my name first.
Mr. Ular, Mr. Ular?
Yes, I just wanted to.
Okay. All right. Well, this matter has been postponed to our next meeting. And we look to see you here at the next month's meeting. Thanks for attending. Okay, our next item is other business. Not seeing anything on the agenda. Staff report, Ms. Schluto.
So, thank you. I just wanted to bring you all up to speed on the process for the master plan that's moving forward. We held the virtual open house on March twenty-fifth. We had approximately fifteen, fifty, apologize, attendees. If you haven't been able, if you weren't able to attend, and if you haven't had the opportunity, the recorded present, opening presentation and the summaries of the breakout rooms is available for viewing on our city website. Megan Mason Minak from Carla Wortman Associates gave a really great presentation on the housing and commercial corridor surveys that were distributed and were available. So the, the recording doesn't follow the attendees into the breakout room, but it does allow for a recording of the summary discussion topics at the very end. This afternoon, I provided everyone with an update via email and their attendance and the progress related to their continuing education credits. As you know, we went over this in great detail at the last two meetings, when we updated the rules of procedure. We do have a resiliency and planning webinar series that is going on every Wednesday from eight-thirty to ten. There are some really interesting materials on sustainability and green infrastructure, et cetera. So if that's something that you're interested in, please let me know and I can get you signed up. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McAlpine, saw your hand.
I just wanted to tell Ms. Schluto that I was unable to participate in the master planning webinar, webinar. My whole family came down with COVID, so we were out of commission for two weeks.
Oh, my.
I hope you're, you're all doing well now.
We're, we're on the road to recovery.
Great. Good. Glad to hear that.
And that is with getting my first shot and ready for my second shot within days.
Well, glad you're back with us. Actually, I don't think you missed any time with us. You sound great. And Ms. Schluto, nice, tell you with the report that you've provided us and all the work that's been done on the master plan, and I participated in that. We've got some excellent planning going on in Berkeley right now. You know, I thank you for everything you've done. You're really putting on a lot of different hats here. You can't leave. All right.
You will not leave.
Motion and support. Okay, let's see. So, board member report, any of the board members have anything to report? Okay, I'll move on to Councilmember Hennan. Thanks again for attending.
Um, so, and you already stole some of my thunder. I was also going to thank Ms. Schluto for the excellent reports that she puts out that doesn't leave very much for me to add. I do have, you know, the last meeting, we had some issues with internet connectivity related to WOW. And the city did reach out and speak to someone at the company about that. They had scheduled, had some scheduled network maintenance, but first it took longer than they expected. And then the new hardware they put in specifically for our area had some outages. I've asked if they have any plans to mitigate, to prevent problems like that in the future, but we just don't know about that. So that's the extent of what we were able to learn.
Thanks, Ms. Ward, yes.
Councilman Nen, can they maybe not do updates in the evening when a lot of people do have meetings and things like that? If they want to do it, do it after midnight, between midnight and four, five AM?
Right. So I'm, I'm going to, so I don't know the details specifically. I'm going to speak from my own experience in the computer field that it sounds like they probably did plan for a late night, but it just went days longer than they anticipated. So they probably did not plan for any outages or any significant outages. And things went wrong and cascaded. So I'm speculating some there, but from my own experience, that's what it sounds like to me.
Well, thanks for the update. I appreciate the explanation. As one of the people that had connectivity problems our last meetings, appreciate the prompt investigation.
That's all I have.
Okay, thanks. All right, at this point, I'll is now time in our meeting for public comments. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on anything not relating to the agenda. To speak during public comment, participants in the webcast can utilize the raise hand function by selecting manage participants on the bottom of your dashboard, and then select the more button in the bottom right-hand corner. Our moderator will call your name aloud and unmute you so that you can speak. For those that have called in, you can be placed in the queue for public comment by selecting star nine. Our moderator will announce the last four digits of your phone number for recognition and unmute you so that you can speak. Participants will have three minutes to speak as they would if we were meeting in person. Once your three minutes are up, you'll be muted by our moderators. Additionally, comments can be submitted prior to or at this time to zoning@berkleymish.net where residents and community members can submit public comments as well. Your email must be able to be read in less than three minutes. Given the circumstances with the virtual space, we may not be able to read through all of the email comments, but know that we will have them stored and acknowledged on the public record. To participate in public comment, you can dial by phone at one, three, one, two, six, two, six, six, seven, nine, nine, and enter the meeting ID, nine, nine, seven, zero, six, five, two, eight, two, seventy. So at this time, I'll open the public comments period. Ms. Schluto, do you have any emails we've received prior to the meeting?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And Mr. Baumgartner, we received any emails? Do we have anybody waiting in the queue?
Mr. Chair, you had an individual screen named Jeremy's AIDS that indicated they wanted to speak but are no longer in the meeting.
Gotcha. Okay, and I don't see them in the meeting either on my screen. Okay, well, well, I guess with that being said, they're, they're not here, so I'll close the public comment. And eight-thirty-nine PM, I'll adjourn the meeting. Thanks, everybody for attending and have a great month.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Bye, thanks.